All right, being seven o'clock, we'll call the common council meeting to order. Please stand for your pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Move to adoption of the agenda. Any additions or corrections?
Aye.
Been moved by who?
Barrington.
Barrington, seconded by Mr. Zog. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move into approval of October 13th, 2020 council minutes, October 23rd, and November 2nd, 2020 special council minutes. Need a motion to approve them?
No move.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Tom, do you want to second that?
Okay, I'll second him.
Thanks, sir. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tom, did you say aye or opposed?
Yeah.
Okay.
I pulled. I aye, should I?
Aye, okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Move to authorization of paying bills. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will pay bills in the amount of $777,356.56.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, for the authorization, pay the bills in the amount of $777,356.56. Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Thank you, Tom. Motion carried by all. All right. Moving on, we'll open up for that 7:03. We'll open up for public hearing. For the ordinance to amend sewer monthly rate fees from $4 to $5. Any comment? Hearing none. We'll adjourn the public hearing for the ordinance to amend sewer monthly rate fees. Move on to the public hearing of 2021 budget ordinance. Any public comment? Any comment at all? Hearing none. We'll adjourn the public comment. Or public hearing, my bad. Move on to public input. Hearing none. Keep rolling along. Standing in special committees, we'll start with Board of Public Works. Mr. Barrington.
Board of Public Works. Met on October 2nd, 2020, 4:30 p.m. First item on the agenda was wastewater treatment facility updates. Nothing out of the ordinary, so we've moved on from there. The next item was to consider a request for additional street light at the intersection of Pine and Dickinson Streets. The city received a letter from two residents requesting additional street lighting at the intersection of Pine and Dickinson. Several board members had visited the site and agreed it was dark. Motion made and seconded to approve that. Motion carried by all. This will be brought to the council tonight. The next item was review proposals and award the 2020-2021 snow removal services contract. Three proposals were received for the 2020-2021 snow removal services. Proposals from Rawls Auto Body and Snow Plowing, Midstate Asphalt, were similar in cost. Rawls Auto Body has been plowing for a couple years. We're well satisfied with them. And so, this motion was made and seconded to recommend the snow removal contract to Rawls. That will be brought to council tonight. The next item we have to bring to council will be to change the sewer rate from $4 to $5. Director's report memo was included, reviewed by the committee. Service anniversaries, there were none to report. Next month's agenda items. We'll be meeting on Wednesday, November 30th, 2020. No further business. Meeting was adjourned at 4:45. The first thing I will bring up tonight is to adopt an ordinance amending the sewer monthly rates from $4 to $5. This is the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance amending sewer monthly rate fees from $4 to $5. Any additional comments? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Thank you, Tom. Motion carried by all.
The next item I have, I've moved to approve an additional street light at the intersection of Pine and Dickinson.
Second.
That's kind of an offset street, and that's why we don't have proper lighting up there.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve additional street light at the intersection of Pine and Dickinson. Any further? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
The next item I have is to approve, I make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 snow removal services to Rawls.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve 2020-2021 snow removal services by Rawls. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Barrington. Uh, next, we'll move to finance and personnel. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, November 4th, at 4:30 p.m. in the council chambers and via Zoom. Luanne Boya, from Associated Financial Group, the city's health insurance consultant, presented health insurance options for the year 2021. There were questions and answers related to health insurance bidding process, health insurance trends, and options to be considered. After discussion of the ability to fund the increase within the 2021 budget, motion was made by Dorsey and seconded by Fahey to recommend the council acceptance of the WA Trust 3,000-6,000 deductible plan for the city employees for the year 2021. Motion carried 7-0. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Fahey to recommend a council approval of the 2021 budget ordinance. Motion carried 7-0. Finance Director Judy Ratke discussed the closure of the Economic Development Fund. The state called for a closure of this fund, and the city is required to pay the state back for those funds currently collected, and an option to buy out any remaining loans uncollected. Finance Director Judy Ratke recommended use of unassigned fund balance to pay the state for the economic development loan that is currently in repayment. Approving the use for unassigned fund balance would increase the amount paid to the state. The city is then able to apply back to the state for the use of those funds for state-approved purposes. On the approved list for the city to use economic development funds are ADA improvements at Hatton, Pfeiffer, Franklin, and Memorial Parks. Also, the city is in the process of certifying Lyons, Lima, and Avon Streets to meet the state qualifications. If the city can certify that area, it will allow the city to use the funds to mill and overlay that area. After a lengthy discussion, motion was made by Dorsey and seconded by Fahey to recommend a council use of 155,000 of unassigned fund balance to pay the state for the outstanding loan. Motion carried 7-0. The city intends to continue a conversation at the Economic Development Committee on the use of those funds as the loan is being repaid. City Administrator Chad Hirth reviewed the city clerk job description. After discussion of the changes from the previous job description, motion was made by Fahey and seconded by Dorsey to recommend the council approval of revised city clerk customer service representative job description. Motion carried 7-0. Finance Director Ratke reviewed the monthly financial reports, and the financial director report was discussed. There be no further public comment or business, the meeting adjourned at 5:39 p.m. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on Wednesday, December 2nd, at 4:30 p.m. Then, I would move to approve the WA Trust 3,000-6,000 deductible health plan for the city employees for 2021.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve the WA Trust 3,000-6,000 deductible health plan for the city employee for 2021. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Finch? Motion carried eight to one.
Then, I would move, we waive the rules to adopt the 2021 budget ordinance in one reading.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to waive the rules to adopt ordinance in one reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
Then I would move to approve the 2021 budget ordinance.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the 2021 budget ordinance. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
Before we move on, Your Honor, I would like to especially thank Finance Director Ratke, City Administrator Hirth, the Police Chief Jeff, Fire Chief Mark, and all the department heads for putting together the budget. We had some real challenges this year. It's getting harder every year to come up with the balanced budget, as we get, expenses just keep going up, and we're limited to the amount of funds that we have available, so some tough decisions have to be made, and they really cooperate, work together, and I really want to thank them for that job.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, next, approve the use of 155,000 of unassigned fund balance to pay the state for the economic development loan.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the use of $155,000 of unassigned fund balance to pay the state for the economic development loan. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
Move to approve the job description for the city clerk customer service representative position.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve job description for the city clerk customer service representative position. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Fred? Motion carried by all.
Then I move to approve the license list for November as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the license list. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Mr. Beesaw?
Sleeping.
Motion carried by all.
That's all I have for finance and personnel, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Morak. And thank you to everybody that worked on that budget, too. I agree. You guys put in a lot of effort and came out and made it happen. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the parking wrecks with Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The November parking wrecks meeting met on December 2nd. Meeting was called to order at 4:47. Denis, Herter moved to approve the agenda with the removal of items number five, authorizing the purchase of design and bid specifications for video production and server upgrades to be financed by the cable fund. Motion was seconded by Fahey. Motion carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Development goals for comprehensive outdoor recreational plan corp. Tish now with East Center Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission led a discussion and input session on creating goals for the city's corp plan. Tish will bring the results of the goal session to the next committee meeting. No motions made on this item at this time. Consider authorizing an agreement with Industrial Roofing Services for design and bidding services. Industrial Roofing Services provided agreements for design and bidding services to replace section select roofs at City Hall, the Police Department, the Library, and Museum. The total cost for these services totaled is $36,600. Fahey moved, seconded by Zog, that council consider an agreement with Industrial Roofing Services for design and bid specifications for the roofs at City Hall, the Police Department, and the Library Museum in the amount of $36,600. Motion was carried by all. That will be brought to council. Review and recommend to council the 2021 part-time and seasonal wage schedule. Chad Hirth provided the 2021 part-time and seasonal wage schedule and noted that there are no changes, are no changes proposed for the 2020 schedule. Herter moved, seconded by Fahey, to recommend to council the 2021 part-time and seasonal wage schedule. Motion was carried by all. That will be brought to council. Directors report and memo service anniversary reports. Ginger Arnt, recreational superintendent, completed 18 years of service on October 28th. Committee members report, there was none presented. Future agenda items, virtual tour of Flora Hill Cemetery. Herter moved to adjourn, seconded by Marx, adjourned at 5:30. Motion was carried by all. I would look for consideration of authorizing an agreement with the Industrial Roofing Services for design and bidding services.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the agreement with the Industrial Roofing Services for roof system analysis and design. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
I would look for approval from the council to review and recommend to council the 2021 part-time and seasonal wage schedule.
Motion been made and seconded to approve 2021 part-time and seasonal wage schedule. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. We'll move on to Planning Commission. Mr. Beesaw, you're up again.
Okay. October Planning Commission met. Excuse me. On October 22nd. Motion was approved by Basset, seconded by Steingraber to approve the August 27th, 2020 meetings presented. Motion is carried 7-0. Review and approve a CSM for Star Communications LLC. A copy of the CSM was presented for review. The purpose of the CSM was to divide a parcel at 102 North Ridge Drive owned by Babes of New London Incorporated, and combine the southwest portion with a parcel at 106 North Ridge Drive owned by Star Communications LLC. The CSM was reviewed by staff and recommended for approval. Motion by Walbrook, seconded by Spillman, to approve the CSM as presented. Motion carried 7-0. Update on planning issues and other agenda items, there was none presented. Due to the Thanksgiving holiday, the next Planning Commission meeting is planned to be held on Thursday, November 19th, 2020. Move to adjourn by Steingraber, seconded by Noel. Meeting was adjourned at 5:11. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Move on to Economic Development Committee. Mr. Morak?
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, October 27th, at 4:30 p.m. in the New London City Council Chambers and via Zoom. The August 25th, 2020 minutes were approved. City Administrator Hirth informed the committee that in the last month, he's been in contact with two different developers regarding the downtown riverfront site, one of which was SC Suiderski. LC. Jackie Miller and Madeline Chek from SCS were present via Zoom, introduced their company, and provided a presentation showing the experience and options that SC Suiderski offers in multifamily housing. SCS currently manages multifamily housing units all over the state and has plans to build in several other nearby communities, including Shawno, Hortonville, and Oshkosh. Jackie stated that they will perform a market study to determine which types of rental units may see the most success at that site and present that information at a future committee meeting. The committee reviewed a proposal by Midwest Properties Commercial Development Incorporated, who has expressed interest in purchasing a property in the city's northeast industrial park. The developer designs, builds, and leases commercial property and has a current tenant that is interested in relocating to this area. The initial proposal would include a building, building a 6,000 square foot facility for the current tenant in phase one, then building two more 12,000 square foot facilities for other tenants in phases two and three within the next five years. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Kapitski to recommend that Administrator Hirth work with Midwest Properties LLC on a developer's agreement for purchase of property in the city's northeast industrial park to be presented at a future common council meeting for consideration. Motion carried by all. State Administrator Hirth reviewed information on the Claritas marketing information that was presented at last month's committee meeting. Committee members were provided information on lifestyle segments as defined in the marketing materials and were asked to review it for future consideration to determine which segments the city should market for attracting new residents. Kapitski led a discussion on a report provided by the National Main Street Center entitled "The Impact of COVID-19 on Small Businesses." The report detailed a survey that was done with 300,000 small businesses nationwide. Kapitski asked the committee to consider completing a survey with New London businesses to get feedback on how the COVID-19 pandemic has affected them. The result would be shared with the Downtown Revitalization Committee, as well as the community at large, to hopefully encourage people to shop local. Kapitski will create a draft of the survey for the committee to review at the next meeting. Kapitski provided a business update, including details of a new candy shop being located by a New London high school student, new ownership of the Wolf River Family Restaurant, formerly the Beacon Street Deli, relocation of Larson Insurance, the availability to purchase a former Piggly Wiggly store, and the opening of a new boutique shop. Suggested agenda items for the next meeting include presentations for potential developers for the downtown riverfront site, review of a New London COVID-19 business survey, and possible conversions with the New London School District on how they were managing the COVID-19 pandemic. Chairman Mark reported that he, along with Mayor Herter, Administrator Hirth, and Alderman Beesaw interviewed several candidates for the student representative positions on the Economic Development Committee and the Parks and Rec Committee. Mayor Herter will appoint the selected candidates at the next common council meeting. The next committee meeting will be scheduled for November 17th at 4:30 p.m. The meeting adjourned at 5:34 p.m. You also have in your packet copies of the Opaquah County Economic Development Corporation monthly report for October. And that's all I have for economic development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Morak. Move on to minutes and reports of, and you all have them in your packet. We'll stand them as read. We'll keep moving on to reports of officers on recent events and announcements to the public. We'll start off with the mayor's reports. Have, start off with the student committee members of 2021, the appointment by myself. Start with the economic development. We'll appoint Elena Wolfe and Kennedy Lathrop to Economic Development Committee. Congratulations, ladies. Next, we will appoint Rachel Schuler to the Park and Rec Committees, and congratulations, and I believe she's in our audience tonight. So, congratulations to her as well. Second thing I have to read. It's a joint statement of the City of New London and Jackie Byer, November 10th, 2020. With the assistance of a mediator from the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, the City of New London and the city clerk Jackie Byer have reached a settlement agreement regarding Ms. Byer's claim that she has experienced illegal harassment and retaliation from two other city employees. In recognition of this importance of the properly administered election, Ms. Byer will continue her employment as city clerk until the November 3rd election has been reconciled with the state. She will resign after the reconciliation. Ms. Byer thanked the city for the opportunity to serve the residents of New London in clerk capacity. "I have enjoyed my daily interactions with the people of the city, both the ones have, both the ones I have known for many years and new acquaintances," Ms. Byer said. She also thanked the election officials she has had the pleasure to work with, adding, "They are a great bunch of people." Mayor Mark Herter and city council have appreciated Ms. Byer's commitment to serving the residents with her experience in many areas of government. Mayor Herter notes Ms. Byer's ability to provide reassurance to our residents in the unsettling pandemic. "Her concern for the residents was evident in the way she dealt with them. Her ability to put her own feelings aside and continue to be cheerful and helpful is commendable." Please direct any follow-up questions to myself. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to city clerk.
Thank you, Your Honor. Election results from November 3rd. The city had 3,532 voters turn out, which was an 82% total turnout. Special recognition for two poll workers that donated their time on Election Day. They answered the call that was put out by a lot of different agencies. One of them, and they both are residents of the city of New London, one is Wendy Brunson. She worked here at City Hall on Election Day all day. And Tammy Kettenhoven worked at Washington Center for the second half of the day, and they donated their time. So, I think they deserve extra recognition from folks in the city. That was really nice. All of the new workers that came forward, as well as our experienced workers that contributed to the election process, did a phenomenal job. We were really busy, really slammed, and everybody completed everything in a timely manner, and still were able to have fun and enjoy the day with each other, so that was great. Reminders moving ahead. The first day to circulate nomination papers for the 2021 spring election is December 1st. December 25th at 5:00 p.m. is the deadline for incumbents not seeking reelection to file non-candidacy papers with the clerk's office. Failure to file these papers, non-candidacy papers, will extend the nomination period deadline for 72 hours for that office only, not all of them, just any offices that that applies to. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. We'll continue to move on to utility manager. Mr. Basset?
Thank you, Your Honor. Electric crews fixed a broken-off pole at 1709 Division Street on the 14th of October and replaced a bad pole on the 300 block of Shawno Street on the 15th. Crews finished our work with the pay stations at the boat landing on the 16th. Electric crews changed voltages at the lift stations on the 21st and 22nd, rewiring the transformers by familiar grounds and on the end of Mill Street. Electric crews had a blown arrestor at ore trucking on November 1st. Electric crews have been working on the underground on Division Street by Steel King. The three-phase overhead line will be removed. The electric crews also put services in at East Ridge subdivision at 203 Zachary Court on the 2nd of November, and they will be installing one hopefully this week if it dries up on North Point Drive by Wolf Cheese. The water department started listening to hydrants after flushing, found several hydrants leaking. They've been working on replacing parts and operating them, correcting those leaking hydrants. On the week of October 26th through the 30th, the water department had Parker Excavating come and assist on several valve replacements and shut off several leaking. They also valve replacements and shut off several leaking. They also fixed a main break on the 13th across from Bucky's Restaurant by the creek. That main was 12 feet deep. Tyler Stray and Kyle Stewart attended their first week of school for their apprenticeship on the 19th through the 23rd. We have had 10 applicants for the line worker position open at the utility. That position will be posted until November 20th. I encourage anyone interested in that position to please apply. The utility would also like to present its payment to the City of New London for $760,000. The utility is proud to be one of the largest taxpayers to the city. And I would like to recognize my electric supervisor, Mike Frederick. He's had 37 years of service this month with New London Utilities. Also, Rick Hulk, he has had many years with the utility, but five continuing after his retirement in the water department. He currently is one of our night watchmen. And that is all I have for the utility.
Thank you, Mr. Basset.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Continue to move on to Director of Public Services, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to invite everyone to join our recreation department in our first virtual reindeer dash. You can run anytime or anywhere because it's virtual between November 28th and December 6th. For more information on that, go to the New London Parks and Recreation Facebook page and look for the reindeer dash under the events section or call our office at 982-8521. We're also joining the Chamber of Commerce in lighting up downtown New London by holding a holiday tree lighting ceremony in the downtown during the reverse parade that the chamber is hosting. There'll be three trees, one in honor of veterans and public safety, one in memory of loved ones, and then the last one to thank our service groups and nonprofits in our community. If you're interested in getting involved, please call our number at 982-8521 and ask for Ginger. And then lastly, I'd like to remind property owners, as the temperatures fall, please help us out and move your sump pump hoses from discharging into the streets and get them away and put them into the backyards or something because once the temperatures go down, we typically have problems with icing conditions happening. You know, you start icing the streets, you're icing your neighbor's driveway as that water goes down the curb. So, as the temperatures fall below freezing, please do remove your sump pump hoses out of the street to prevent that problem happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirth. We'll move on to Chief of Police, Mr. Schlader.
Earl Rockdash completed 30 years of service at the police department. Also wanted to remind everyone that we have started our winter ordinance parking. So, make sure your vehicles are off the road from 3:00 AM till 6:00 AM so our street crews can get out there and get the roads plowed once it starts snowing here. And I'd also like to send out a special thank you to all of our citizens here in New London. A couple months ago, we started a drone program, and we were trying to raise some funds and stuff to be able to get a drone for the police department, the fire department. We're gonna use it for other city agencies, also help out the Wapaka County Sheriff's Department. And we were able to fundraise and get donations of $15,227 for that drone. We took the rest out of one of our line items in our budget, and we should be getting this drone here in the next couple of weeks. We are also training people in all those departments through the FAA, and they'll be passing Part 107, which will make them a pilot for drones, so that they'll be certified to be able to fly them. So, I'd just like to thank everyone. It really is very gracious of everyone, the donations I received, the broad prize that people came doing stuff. It was just great. And then finally, I'd like to wish Officer Brody Erickson good luck. He took a job at Marshfield Police Department. He started actually yesterday. That's his hometown and his wife's hometown. So, we currently have a vacancy at the police department. Our applications are due on Monday of next week. I'd like to wish Brody and his wife the best of luck. He was a great officer for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move on to the Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got some service recognitions. Ted Coppersmith, five years with a total of 16 because he did leave for a couple of years. Jake Dishno, 12 years. Tyler Stray, 12 years. Also, I'd like to thank everyone who purchased raffle tickets and donated over the years for our UTV. We actually did purchase a UTV now this week. We're gonna be having a module put in that we can fight wildland fires and we can also have, use it for rescue. So, thanks to the citizens and everyone who donated and purchased raffle tickets. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wilfer. With that being said...
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow's Veterans Day. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all my fellow veterans for their service to this country. I would especially like to thank the members of this council for their service, the veterans of this council. If you are a veteran, please raise your hand. At the council... At the council is consists of veterans. And the city of New London is very fortunate to have these veterans serving their city. So, I thank them.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. With that said, we'll look for a motion to adjourn. So, move. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're adjourned.
Good night, Tom.
Good night, Tom. Thank you.